Opening statement, please.
Planning Board meeting Thursday, April 7, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 7, 2022, the copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Troy Town News. Second, on January 7, 2022, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 7, 2022, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to the members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. For anyone calling in on the phone, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself. Please note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
Mr. Dorado? He said he could not make it tonight. Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser said he may be late. Mr. Nacastro's been excused. Mr. Seaman's been excused. Mr. Spanville?
Here.
Ms. Talenti?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can everybody please rise for a moment of silence and for all those first responders and those serving both here and abroad? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Eileen, any approval of minutes?
I have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
Correspondence, the first item is to just let the board know that I believe we're staying on Zoom for the time being. I had cleared that with Brian, Mr. Chairman Tannenhouse, and he said to leave it on Zoom. So for members of the board, we will be on Zoom. The next item is a letter from Adam Fiala. He is the attorney for Mom of Commerce Center. They asked that we adjourn tonight's hearing for Mom of Commerce to the hearing of May 12 to provide sufficient time to respond to the review letters from the Planning Board's consultants. And they will notice for the May 12 hearing. They did not notice for tonight, so they're actually rescheduled to May 12.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you want to make a note, announcement or anything?
Go ahead, Ron, you're going to unmute.
Since they're going to renotice, there's no announcement that's necessary. It'll be all part of that notice.
Thank you. And the last item I have is an email from Mr. Pape. He asked that this matter for 90 Industrial Court LLC, which is on tonight's hearing, be carried to the Board's May 19, 2022 Planning Board Hearing. The applicant is requesting time to prepare revisions and responses to comments and concerns brought to the applicant's attention by the Planning Board professionals. And he asked that jurisdiction be accepted tonight and that the matter be carried to May 19 without the requirement of renotice.
On the first part of that, I have not reviewed the affidavit of publication and service. Have you, Eileen?
Yes, I have. It's correct. It's in order.
And then what date again, Eileen? Are we carrying them? Okay, the application of 90 Industrial Court LLC, case number SP 1098, will be carried to the Board's May 19, 2022 meeting. I mean, I guess based upon, you said that will be a virtual meeting?
Yes.
That will be a virtual meeting beginning seven o'clock. The instructions on how to access the meeting will be available on the township's website and all documents associated with the application will also be available on the township's website. There will be no further notice to property owners.
Before we continue, let the record reflect that Paul Dorado has joined the meeting. And that's all the correspondence I have.
Thank you. Any submission waivers?
We have resolutions.
I'm sorry, resolutions. Resolution case number SD-3000, John Kennedy, Kenny Kelly, sorry, eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Dorado, now that he's here, and Ms. Talenti. Do I have a motion?
I make motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
And Ms. Talenti?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Case number SP-1101, Alair Road, for submission waivers. Eligible voters, Mr. Bavai, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Spanville, and Ms. Talenti. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
And Ms. Talenti?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Hey, the next resolution is case number SP-1093 for Ecosystems LLC, eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Spanville, and Spanville, and Ms. Talenti. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
And Ms. Talenti?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Any submission waivers?
I have no submission waivers this evening.
The application before us is case number SP-1101, Alair Road LLC, minor site plan.
We have attorney Dante Alfieri here representing the applicant.
Thank you.
Dante, can you tell me who else you need brought into the meeting?
Mr. Iskowitz.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman. Members of the board, Dante Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. Everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, thank you. Tonight, we are here seeking the Board's approval to convert the existing structure from a non-conforming use to a conforming use, which would be a warehouse storage area. I'm going to have one individual provide testimony tonight. He is a, he is the member of the entity. The property is located 137 Alair Road, block 47.01, lot 1. So I'm going to have our individual come up. Mrs. Iskowitz, can you unmute yourself and show yourself, show your face, too?
Yeah, hello. You see me?
No.
No. No? Where is it now? My second is coming up? It says video started.
You may want to check to see if, sometimes there's a little shutter, something that blocks the camera. You have to like move it over to the side.
Camera's on. One second.
It's not a button. You have to like physically do it.
Right, I know, I see, but I see the camera and it's on. Let me see.
I've learned from my own mistakes.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if there's allow, it's all on. The camera access isn't on. What else could it be? Because it's on the video. And, no, it says, it's on, it says stop. The other option would be to stop the video.
Are you able, are you able to see yourself?
No, it's a black screen.
Yeah.
That's what we have.
Right.
Maybe try going to settings, go into settings, then go into video, maybe see if the video is permitted.
Dante, do you want us to take like a five-minute recess while you work with?
Yes.
Login from another computer.
Okay, well, we'll take a short.
Meanwhile, from another computer.
Yeah, we'll take a short recess to allow you some time to get on.
Okay, I can login from another computer meanwhile to work that out. Let me do that right here.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you want to just announce that we're going to go into a brief recess?
Yes, please. Today is, the time is 7:14. We're going to take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 7:19.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome.
The Board will now take a short recess. We'll be back at 7:19.
We'll now reconvene.
Planning Board will now reconvene.
Thank you, Chairman.
Ms. Iskowitz, I just need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
C-H-U-M-I. Last name is I-T-Z-K-O-W-I-T-Z.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Alfieri.
Ms. Iskowitz, what is your affiliation with the entity Alair Road LLC?
When did it start, you're asking?
No, what's your affiliation?
Oh, I'm the owner.
You're the owner, okay. And you've purchased the subject property?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Can you just describe to the Board what your particular business operations would look like at this site?
So we have 12 employees. Five of them are, seven of them actually are like by computer work, you know, taking care of, bringing in orders, answering phone calls, like secondary work. And then we have five warehouse people who help with packaging out and shipping out our orders.
And it is, so you have packaging, it's a wholesale?
Correct.
And do you have any retail or showrooms with regards to this particular site?
So we have a website online is where people shop us retail. And then, like a showroom, we have for our wholesalers, like from beginning of seasons, to come see the new products of the seasons.
Okay, but you don't have, you won't have traditional retail on the site?
Correct.
And you are going to be occupying the entire building?
Yes.
Now, what type of deliveries are you expecting?
So we get, you know, daily UPS deliveries, like then USPS, and they get pickups at the end of every day is UPS. Once in a while, we'll get an air shipment like FedEx Express like that. And then, like quarterly, we get shipments in from China, which is a container coming in to the lot to unload.
Do you have tractor trailers making any deliveries?
No.
Okay, so you, the only type of deliveries you're expecting are box, box truck?
Box, yeah.
Okay.
Dante, can you just go back? Because she said quarterly a container shows up. Usually, that's like a tractor trailer. So can you explain what she means by container?
That's a truck, I didn't really, it's a truck that comes in like a full container that is unloaded.
So like an 18-wheeler, an 18-wheeler?
I don't know, 40-foot container? Does that like mean anything from like China? I don't know. It's like a big container.
So then I would, then I would suspect that that would be a tractor-trailer type delivery and you anticipate that to be once a month?
That, no, not once a month, more like quarterly, you know, every two, every two, three months.
All right, so you expect at least one box truck, I mean, one tractor-trailer delivery once a quarter, maybe twice a quarter?
Correct.
Now, you noted that you're going to be a single user of the site. Are you proposing any exterior improvements?
No, I want to know just one question. Is there an option, like, because when we get to think, like, what do I have to do? I'm just asking about like a loading dock. Is that like something able to do? I don't know.
Right, right now, we're not proposing any, any exterior improvements, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you may, is there a loading space on the, at the site currently?
Yeah, there's a loading space, but it's not a loading dock. It doesn't go in deeper.
But it's a space, so you can, that's where your deliveries will be dropped off?
Correct.
All right, and you mentioned that you have 12 employees. What are the hours of operation?
Nine to five.
Nine to five, Monday through?
Monday through Thursday, and then Friday is nine to one.
And then nothing over the weekend?
Usually not. I'm saying here and there, if it's a busy season, once in a while, but 99% not.
Okay. Now, with this type of use, you're anticipating to generate office-type refuge and cardboard boxes?
Explain what you're saying?
What, what type of trash are you expecting your use to generate?
Cardboard boxes, yeah, it's like.
And then just traditional office?
Office, yeah.
Trash? And you're going to have containers located inside the building to handle that and then have a private hauler take it out?
Take it, correct.
Okay. You're not proposing any outdoor storage?
No.
All right, and with regards to the lighting on the site, is there, is there suitable lighting outside in the parking area? There's existing lighting now?
Yeah, nice amount, yeah.
And you're not proposing any additional light?
Correct.
And there, is there, is there an existing sign on the site?
There is an existing sign from the old previous people on the building itself.
Are you replacing that existing sign?
We would like to, yeah.
Is it going to be the same size as the current sign?
Covering, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's not going to exceed the size of the existing sign?
Correct.
And then, with regards to the exterior, there's a there's a requirement to I guess there's a, there's a requirement with regards to breaking up the facade of the exterior and you're, you're willing to work with the town to make a modification to the exterior for the facade, to comply?
Yes.
All right, so Dante, I just want to be clear. So you're the, you're saying that the applicant will comply with the architectural ordinance requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
No.
No. They're not going to, the bump outs are not going to be there, but they're going to upgrade the facade. And if the Board is okay with it, they can do that in coordination with my office, but you're not going to have like.
They're going to have to describe a little something of what they're going to do then, if it's not going to be compliance, because relief has to be granted. So there needs to be more than just, we're going to do something and work with Jen. So is there something in particular that's being proposed that we can put into the resolution? That, so at least there's some sort of understanding of the direction that you're moving in?
They're definitely, go ahead, Dante.
Go ahead, Jen.
They're definitely improving the facade exterior with new, I guess it's siding, is it siding on the building? Um, and to, you know, because it's, it looks a little old and tired right now, so they're going to kind of improve the look of the exterior as well as the, the, the top, which I don't know what you want to call it. It's kind of a bump out on the top that goes around, like a band that goes around the top in a grayish color, which is similar to what's there, but newer, but there won't be, you know, and it's the facade has courses in it, so it kind of has a breakup of it, but there are no, it doesn't bump out, you know, like the three feet that we typically require in the organs, you know, but it's an existing building, so they're going to upgrade the facade, similar to what it looks like, but newer and fresher.
Okay. Yeah, to, to piggyback off that, it's almost a rim that would be installed on the exterior top portion of the building to break up the facade.
Jen, in your opinion, based upon what you've learned about what is proposed, do you feel comfortable that from a good planning standpoint, will the town will be well-served?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to point out that there are two existing conditions. There is a existing condition of 99,936 square feet, where 120,000 square feet is a requirement for the minimum lot area. And it's an existing condition, as well as the rear yard setback where 50 feet is required, and we have 49.9 feet. And as we testified earlier, we're not proposing any changes to the exterior of the site.
Okay, any landscaping improvements, Jen, that may be needed?
Um, no, I, I, I think that, you know, we had questions about how they were going to handle the refuse, but I think that the applicant indicated they're going to have containers, keep them inside the building, so no outdoor storage of those containers, because there's no enclosure, and they'll be picked up by a private hauler. The only thing, and I would defer probably to Jordan on, is the need for the loading space. Like while I'm looking at the survey, there looks like there's area behind where a truck could stop and unload, but it doesn't seem to be striped for loading, so, you know, and that would really just be necessary for, you know, the larger truck that comes in once every three months or so. But there is area there and there is circulation around the entire perimeter of the building, so I think that, you know, the site could use a little love, so I'm happy to see somebody coming in and cleaning it up.
Mr. Alfieri, I'm assuming you don't have any type of exhibit or anything that you can show, right, as far as where the loading would take place?
We do not.
Okay, so as Jen mentioned, there is space in the back of the building, but it's not striped. So I assume that unless you're, unless you're not striping it, relief would be required as a design waiver.
Jordan, I'd rather not give relief for a loading dock if the Planning Board needs it. Let's just ask for the, the striping.
We have no objection to providing the striping in that area.
Thank you.
And as far as store, you're not going to have any overnight vehicles or anything?
Is this quiz?
What does that mean overnight vehicles, like people?
Are you, are you going to store vehicles overnight at the parking lot?
No.
And you're not anticipating any deliveries overnight?
So, oh, and I have, when a container does come in, sometimes they, a day or two to unload it.
So the container would remain for a day or two, you would unload it, and then it would be picked back up?
Correct.
And this is one, this is one of those deliveries that would happen once or twice a quarter?
Exactly, yeah.
Well, it's still, though, on, on that, our ordinance does have requirements for outdoor storage areas. I believe it needs to be in the rear of the property and it needs to be screened. So whether it's one day, two days, 50 days, that requirement comes into play. So I'm assuming that's relief, Mr. Alfieri, that's being requested?
Yes, we are going to request relief from that requirement.
Did I, Jen and Jordan, did I recollect that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. It looks, it looks like the loading zone would be in the rear of the building, but I would not say it's fully screened, so.
Okay.
You're required for that.
I have a question. Is there a rendering at all done on this?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Alfieri, I'm seeing here from the Fire Bureau that the Fire Bureau wants to chime in on, on updating the fire lanes. I would suspect that you will comply and coordinate with the Fire Bureau to do any additional striping or fire lanes that they require?
Yes, we will.
Thank you. Okay. Is that the end of your testimony?
Yes, Chairman.
Jen, Jordan, I mean, do we have enough here to be able to feel comfortable?
I'm comfortable.
You're comfortable?
Yeah.
I am as well, and if we want, we can just run through the relief real quick, just to make sure we're on the same page.
Thank you.
So you will comply with providing the loading space by striping out a space in the rear of the building, and then you'll maintain your drive aisles as well, correct? To submit something for that?
Correct.
And then you're requesting relief for outdoor storage, which is the tractor-trailer that will load overnight. And that is from section 188-79.
Correct.
Am I missing anything else, Jen?
No, I think you covered everything.
Okay, so just the one.
The one, then. We would just wrap into that, the two pre-existing conditions that were testified to. So, Jordan, just so I'm clear, then on page three of your report, the relief from section 188-107B is no longer necessary?
Correct, they will comply by striping and loading zone.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Eileen?
Yes.
My video went out. I heard the entire thing. I've been trying to get it back on. I can log back out and come back on, or is it okay?
Mr. Cristiano, you're not providing testimony, so it's not required that you have your video. As long as you're telling us that you were here for the entire hearing, you can continue to participate in this manner.
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, we want to open it up to the public? Eileen?
Yes.
The public, now 7:35, we'll open it up for a minute.
At this point in time, the Chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. If anyone has questions or would like to comment on the application, please use the raise your hand feature. I'll bring you in one at a time. You will need audio and video. You'll be sworn in and required to give your name and address. Thank you.
Hey, anybody raise their hand, Eileen?
No one has raised their hand.
Hey, we'll close the public portion. Does anybody on the Board have anything else they'd like to say about this application?
I just have a question. If the only place to leave the tractor-trailer is in the back of the building, and it will take days to unload, and it's only 49 feet clearance in the back of the building, and you now have a tractor-trailer back there, could an emergency vehicle get through there if they had to?
I think we'll let professionals respond.
Yes. It's more than enough room. A typical drive aisle is 24 feet wide. So the tractor-trailer would be pushed up against the building, and there would be more than enough room for it to circulate around.
Perfect, thank you.
Good question, thank you.
I'll definitely check for that, too, when I receive a revised plan.
And I'm sure that the Fire Department will be happy to chime in on that as well, as part of their review letter, where they said they'd be redoing the striping. review letter with, as they said, they'd be redoing the striping around the building.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, uh, Mr. Alfieri, do you want to summarize what the, uh, and I guess the relief that's needed and what has been agreed to and what hasn't been agreed to, please, for the, for the resolution?
Yes, Chairman. Uh, so, uh, as noted, we are here seeking the board's approval to convert the existing structure from a non-conforming use to a conforming use for a warehouse. Um, we've requested relief, um, from the uh, loading off, or overnight loading, um, prohibition. Um, we've requested relief with regards to.
The relief's gonna be limited to, to two days, to no more than two days.
Two days.
For your testimony.
Um, as a, as a condition of the approval, um, we'd be willing to strike the loading area. We're gonna update the fire lanes in cor, in, in concert with the, uh, Fire Bureau. And there are two pre-existing conditions, which are the, uh, minimum lot area and the rear yard setback.
You mentioned. Mr. Alfieri, I would just add to that, that, uh, the applicant is gonna confirm, um, emergency access to the, to the site.
And I'm sorry, did you, you make mention about the working with our professionals to screw up the facade?
I failed to mention that, but yes. That would be also a condition of the approval.
And Jordan, did we miss anything?
No, that, that covers my list.
Thank you. If nobody else has further questions, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make motion. To approve.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talenti?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate your time tonight.
Alright, have a good night.
You too.
Alright, do we have a master plan update of any sort?
The draft documents, uh, were vetted, uh, revised, and we sent out to the Subcommittee for their review. So both of the circulation element and the land use element are done and out to the planning board, or to the planning board master plan Subcommittee currently.
Great, thank you. Uh, executive session, any need?
No, Miss, no, Mr. Chairman.
Without, without further ado, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. Hi.
Everyone, have a good night.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Forget our next meeting is not the third Thursday, it's the fourth Thursday because of Passover, so it's April 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.